Motion to accept the agenda.
I'll move.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Leo, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is accept. Okay, we have the meeting minutes from our June nineteenth meeting. Just for a matter of clarification, I believe wants to approve, I need to sign those tonight, correct? Since Matt's not here. Okay. Um, I didn't have any changes for the meeting minutes. Does anyone else have any updates or changes they'd like to do? We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June nineteenth. Motion by Tom, second by Courtney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes from June nineteenth are approved. Like to open it up for public comment for anything that's not on the agenda tonight, so. Things that that don't want to talk about the um, open space development. This is your opportunity. Yeah. Yeah, that's not on. Since we've got a little time, um, MC, you want to just stand up, maybe introduce yourself if you want and um, use one of our speakers and that way. Yeah, cuz it's, you're, you have a very soft voice.
All right, how's that?
That's better.
Much better, okay. Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, my name is MC Moritz and I am an engineer with O H M Advisors. Um, and we became the township's engineer quite recently here, um, a few months ago. Uh, and I am a municipal engineer. Um, so I do this kind of day-to-day engineering um, in several communities in western Washtenaw County. Um, and I'm, I'm passionate about pipes and pavement. I think most folks find me a bore, but I, I. I, I get a, a kick out of, out of serving the community this way. Um. Before I was an engineer, I, I was with the US Peace Corps for six years. Um, and I'm just passionate about um, community development and. You know, all over the world, there's, there's always more, more needs and priorities than there are resources. Um, and I'm just here to help the folks in charge make informed decisions and um, to answer questions when the public or developers are looking to do something new, so. I'm happy to be here and um, please say hi afterwards.
Yeah, so a question for you.
Yeah.
What's your experience with water and sewer systems?
Yeah, um, well, I did water and sanitation with the US Peace Corps uh, in Panama. Um, so it was very much rural water and sanitation. Um, it was some wells, but it was mostly gravity-fed aqueducts, um, a lot of septic. Um, and then uh, in terms of formal education, I got my. Bachelor's in mechanical engineering and a master's in civil engineering from Michigan Tech. Um, and that master's at Michigan Tech was heavy into wat-san, um, and public health in general.
So have you had a lot of experience with municipal water systems like we have?
Yeah, and especially in Washtenaw County, um, most of my clients are townships. Um, I've got a couple cities that I help out as well, and then uh, I'm also a reviewer with Washtenaw County Water Resources.
Through the Health Department or?
No, through the Drain Commissioner's office. Yeah, yeah, with Gretchen Driscoll now, yeah, and Evan Pratt before.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Oh, you bet.
Anyone else have any question for while, while we have her speaking? Okay. I'm gonna close public comment. Uh, unfinished business, there is none. Um, so we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. This is the public hearing to consider the final development plan for the open space preservation development. F P D P O S P D twenty-five dash zero zero one at five six oh one Conway Road. So what I'd like to do is open it up to uh, Patrick first, if you want to provide any comments or thoughts on uh, your project at this point in time. You want to use the microphone there, it's probably easier.
No, it's.
Just go ahead.
There, green means on, amazing. Uh, thank you, uh. Of course, this is one of many, many hearings related to this project. And um, first of all, I want to thank everybody who's been on the board for going through uh, a long process. Uh, but at this step here, I, what I really want to note is that since the last conceptual review that happened in December. The plan is basically identical, just with more detail fleshed out. My engineer, Jason Van Ryan for Naderfeld is, is here too, to answer more questions about that. We were, we were able to stick to that plan almost identically. With all of the um, agreements and the conditions that you put on during the conceptual review, they, they should all be reflected here.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me know if you have any, any, any more questions.
Yeah, no, so S- Scott, um, I know you've reviewed a lot of the details that have come in. Would you want to provide your summary as to where you think we're at?
So this is the final site plan stage, so we already went through the um, preliminary fight, site plan where we looked at the layout of the sub. The, the pro- property and the layout hasn't changed that much, obviously. Um, MC is here also, the layout of where the detention basin um, is, has changed, but the layout of the lots is exactly the same. The layout of the roadway is in the same location. The proposed uh. Width of the roadway easement hasn't changed from what was proposed before, as you remember. Um, we had uh, a little change to that in the last one.
Yeah, was.
Um, so what Patrick has been doing is going through and hopefully getting approvals from. Um, he has the wells, um, the shared wells, so he has to get approvals of those um, shared wells. Uh, MC has reviewed the engineering and uh, attached to your staff report tonight are her comments. Um, they're not major uh, concerns with the engineering. There were some slight um, revisions that she has requested and that can be hashed out. Prior to them getting their uh, first building permit. So when the, so this project's a little different than most subdivisions that you see. Um, because it's obviously super small, so you're used to seeing Chelsea Springs two or um, Westchester Farms, which is a much larger uh, development. This is a, this is a small nine-lot development. The lot sizes haven't changed at all, they're the exact same. Um, he, uh, Patrick did include the easement on one of the lots to get to the open space area. But what will happen after this is probably a little bit of where you guys wanna, want me to talk about, and that's. Once, if you do approve this, how will it move forward? So the next portion will be Patrick's attorney will write up uh, what is. It's covenants, also called a development agreement. Um, and that will be reviewed by uh, township staff. Township staff includes the township attorney, the township attorney does most of the review. Other things that are attached to that development agreement, which MC can talk a little bit more about are the roadway maintenance agreement. The shared uh, well maintenance agreement, all of the legal documents that go along with the subdivision, because this isn't a. Open space development, so there are common elements that are owned by everybody in that community. So um, there's a, there's gonna be a common element easement, so that common space has to be, has to remain in perpetuity. Um, so as open space and that has to be done through. There were, in our code, it states a few different mechanisms. Um, obviously. Uh, Rob Thal, our attorney, will have a mechanism that he likes to use the most, and you guys will have a mechanism that you want to use and. They'll, they'll determine on, on how that is actually done. But the project as you see it on the land won't really change because of those, those uh, things, so. What, what you see on the land is there's nine lots, they range from um, thirteen thousand nine hundred and six square feet to fifty-nine thousand. Seven hundred and fifty-seven square feet. And there's a road. And those, the road and those uh. Will be built, and then those lots will either be developed by Patrick or the applicant, or be sold off as separate lots of record to other people to develop. Um, in this, in the uh, rules and regulations that we set up in the preliminary, which uh, they have the uh. Lot coverage and the um, setback requirements for this sub. Because it is a um, open space development, you can uh, alter the setbacks and the lot coverage and those types of things. Based on um. Based on that it's like a P U D, but they call it open space development plan. So um, and they did that, and those setbacks are memorialized in this document, they'll also be memorialized in the development agreement. You put them as many places as you can, because it's hard for. Me as your zoning administrator, or somebody, like, let's say this doesn't develop for thirty-five years. And a guy comes in and he says, I want to build on lot one. You're like, what the hell? I have no idea what lot one was supposed to do, so you, you, you try to put it everywhere. You hope whoever buys lot one also brings in the actual thing when they, when they buy it, so that it clues you in, because you're like, oh, there must have been a subdivision here at one time. I can't just use agricultural setbacks, you know? So um, it is a little tricky, but um, that's why we have all of these documents that we create, so.
Okay. So one question, I, I looked at this, like the Wolverine pipeline easement, right, so it just says, looks good, I'll send a easement along with exhibits for review. Is this, is that still open and pending? Did you? No, I don't, I want to look at ten pages, I just. So that was. All right.
Well, and Patrick, I think maybe to, you can explain what you did to that easement. Did you shift that easement a little bit from where it was to the new location? Or what, what was the emphasis behind the ne- necess- the need for that? Change? Yeah.
Um, as we, as we progressed with this thing, we found that there was a, what they call a blanket easement. Across the entire property that was granted to Wolverine, well, Wolverine's predecessor, whatever they were, uh, back in the nineteen thirties. Um, and I decided that since this is going to be inhabited by nine other residents and, and, and a permanent farm, that. That needs to be clarified. So I reached out to Wolverine to say, well. Can this easement be reduced and made into an exclusive easement for you? And they do this. They do this frequently with some of these old easements. So we went through a back and forth process of drafting the new easement, uh, until it was something that satisfied both of us. And uh, if you see in the Wolverine's representative's letter, or email there, brief email. He, he makes reference to the easement, right? As soon as, something like, as soon as Patrick signs the easement, we're ready to go.
Yeah, no, I s- I saw that.
So it, it's, it's better to protect everybody.
No, I'm fine with that, Patrick. Is, is that? If you look at the engineering drawings, is it laid out in there in detail?
It, it happens to be exactly coincident with the buffer along Conway Road.
It's the first hundred feet off Conway Road there, you can see it. On page C four shows it, um, the easiest for you. C four hundred, I mean.
So that allowed us to keep the plan the same and also satisfy the pipeline company and, and protect our residents.
You want to point that out to me?
So the far, the far left of it, right next to Conway Road.
So if you're on C four hundred, you'll see one hundred-foot pipeline easement as the dimension right on the front. Look at Conway Road and then you'll see the wording. C four hundred. You not see it, Mike?
I can see Conway Road.
It's also on four oh one.
Right there, it's uh.
Oh, I see, okay.
One hundred-foot pipeline easement.
I bet you're surprised to find that out, huh?
Well, there's, there's weird stuff in there.
So when this easement area, um, they basically, it just, it gives them access to their underground. Natural gas lines?
They have the right to work in that area to maintain their pipeline and/or lay new pipelines as they see fit.
Okay.
This pipeline, I learned, is, has been inactive for at least twenty-five years. Technically inactive is not abandoned, which means they technically could reactivate it at any time. But I wouldn't, uh, I hope they.
Okay.
You know, I mean, who knows what condition it's in after all that time? They'd have to go back and inspect it, probably repair it. But that's why they need their easement too, in, in case of repairs. Aye.
MC, were you aware of this when you did your report? No, that's fine, I was just. Okay.
Yeah, a- actually, to clarify, it's more like ninety years old, the easement is. And that was back when this was in twenty-two acres, it was a forty-acre parcel then.
I just wonder where it runs also.
I mean, the easement might still apply to other parts, other, other remnants of that forty acres, I'm not sure.
Well, sure.
A lot of people just, just disregard these things, I.
I'm sure it runs through other people's property somewhere. Okay.
Oh, one, one more thing I, I, I'd like to add here that I forgot to mention the first time I was up here. And I, it's not depicted on the drawings at this point, but as the back acreage is intended to be permanently preserved agriculture. Um, at some point, we do intend to build a barn and some greenhouses. Um, and I, I, I believe that would be, I, I don't know if that has to be deducted from the open space area. I, I don't think so, because I think agricultural use includes those things. But I, I thought, I, I should mention this, just, just so it doesn't slip by.
Yeah, so as long as they're used for agricultural purposes, they're exempt under the Right to Farm Act, so. You would be able to uh, build those types of things on vacant land, but you should probably memorialize that in your development agreement. When you're creating it, because what's gonna happen is you're gonna have some sort of maintenance or something on those buildings, and there's gonna have to be some sort of maintenance agreement. That everybody in that community knows about.
Yes, actually, it's part of the master deed.
Yeah.
Right down to it.
Yeah.
Yes.
You talked about the barn at the very beginning though, too. On, on that site there, you were talking to put up a barn.
I, I have some questions for you, Pat, too, so.
So, is that going into tourism though? I'm sorry, oh, go ahead, Doug.
Well, I mean, when you were finished with your.
Oh, go ahead.
No, not, not for tourism, but for agricultural operations strictly. Not gonna have tourists running around the barn. I, I, I know you're thinking about Robin Hills Farm, it's, they, they had a, I, I know, they had a barn, right? No, that, that would certainly violate the open space preservation agreement. I, well, I'm not sure if it would, I, I actually.
It would, it would have to go through a special use permit process if he was to use it for anything other than just purely agricultural purpose.
And we have no intention to do so. I'll just say that.
Um, so Pat, I didn't see any um, plans for outdoor lighting. Are you gonna have any type of outdoor lighting in this subdivision?
Um, we hope not.
Okay. Just wanted to see if you did and what kind.
The answer is no, because he hasn't proposed any, so if he did propose any in the future, he'd have to come back.
Okay. And then um, on the drawings, I don't know if this would be more for MC or you, but um. On the review sheet, it says that uh, it, one of the maps has to show the approximate distance between proposed project and adjacent structures. I saw on the maps all the adjacent structures, but I didn't see any distance on there. I'm not, want to make sure that detailed. Yeah, it just says for vicinity map, needs to include approximate distance between proposed project and adjacent structures. That's the last line item under uh, vicinity map. For exhibit B, the final site plan review.
So I'm guessing that he did not uh, show this, because he's not proposing any buildings at this time, but he could show that, I mean. Show it from the property lines, I guess, to the adjacent structures. I, we talked about this.
Or at least from the property line, from the adjacent structures to the nearest point of the possible building envelopes.
Right.
Right? Uh, we, we did, we, we did talk about it in the conceptual review, and that was part of the thing about planting a line of trees to the north as, as, as a barrier. But, yeah, I, I don't know. I, I think Jason's looking to see if it's under someplace.
I don't think it is.
Oh, while he's looking, another question is, maybe this is for MC. Uh, I see there's gonna be retention ponds in there. Is, is there any type of creek or tributary near the property that would be affected by. Soil runoff or anything from construction?
There's a lot of previous plans that need to be developed.
Okay.
Um, and these, kind of the, the checklist that I ran the site through in terms of water management was for the Washtenaw County.
And there's no chance of during construction of silt or whatever making its way to the. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Again, they'll need, they'll need that soils erosion control as they're building the roadway, and then they'll also need that when they put in the houses. So when they pull separate permits, you always have to get that soils erosion control.
All right, well, that's.
It's just, uh, he's just reading the requirements of this code. The code requires a dimension between the proposed. Prop, and I'm guessing you didn't do it, cuz there's no buildings on this proposed property, but.
Yeah, I, I didn't know what it meant by proposed project, whether that in, included like the whole thing, but.
I know.
It's just that it was checked off and I was looking for it. All right. That's all I have.
Doug, that's all you have? You're good on that one?
I'm, I'm fine now, yeah.
Tom?
Good.
I'm good.
Question.
Sure.
Down here, it says private property.
You want to turn your uh, speaker up?
Um, talks about public well location. So is there gonna be different houses connected to one well? There will be.
They can get up and talk. Yes, uh, similar to the conceptual design, this is intended to be uh, served by a shared well system. Uh, we have two wells on there. Um, one is intended to be a backup. That seems to be a good idea, and there is still a possibility that will be classified as a type one well system, which would actually require that anyway, so. It's um. Put in there, both because it's a good idea and could be a, a requirement as well. But, but yes, the idea is that that shared well system serves the nine homes.
Would that put you back into E G L, E G L authority then?
It's um, it's under discussion right now, but yes, it would.
So you're still flip-flopper, working with the well and water?
I'm, I'm not flip-flopping. Um, if you look carefully at these documents, if you got the letter from uh, Karen Simon of Eagle.
Yeah.
And the letter uh, from Jennifer Khan from the county, they are. Pointing at each other. And it's going to end up as either a type one or a type three. Of course, we hope it ends up as a type three, but we're. We're designing it so that we're ready in case of either outcome. It, it, it's a well-first area as well.
Right, no.
Which, which means.
You gotta.
There, there's a potential that when we drill one of these wells, if it doesn't come up good, we'll have to move it somewhat.
Yeah, so Mike, be, prior to us uh, allowing the splits for the subdivision, the well will have to be.
Oh, I understand.
Taken care of, so yeah.
All right, and. So Scott, from based on your staff report, that were you aware of this back, this back and forth? When I read, I didn't pick up, pick up the back and forth, I picked up the state was throwing it to the county, but I didn't see the county going it back to the state.
Well, yes.
But that's what's going.
Yeah, if you look carefully at Eagle's letter, they've declared that it does not meet the criteria for a type one.
No, I read that in the one.
And then Jennifer's letter, which came out a month later. Said she thinks it's going to be permitted as a type one. Um, so that, that, that's where it stands, and we've had discussions with them about this since then, and.
And this is why we have the condition of project approval, that all state, federal and local.
Yeah, no.
Requirements are taken care of prior to issuance of any um, zoning approvals on the project. And it will, I'm, I don't know, but it will be a while, once Patrick submits his covenances, master deeds and bylaws for. Us to review that, so he'll have time to work through this process as he's working through that process.
We hope to do both in parallel.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would imagine. I'm imagining you're working on the well one right now, even as we speak, so.
We have been, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything on the attorney, on the attorney stuff, so I don't know if you're working on that one or not yet.
Going through a process. Thought there was something, oh, I, I just wanted to mention before this goes too far into it, I, I believe this is a public hearing, so just wanted to. Mention eventually we'll have to go to that part of it.
Okay. Thanks, Patrick. Does anyone else have any questions or comments at this time? Well, Scott, based on what we've talked about this evening, um, you've given us a, an example of approval motion. And I, when I look above it, there's a suggested condition, and then there's conditions of approvals on page seven of ten. No.
Yes, so the suggested condition that's above it.
Yep.
Is just um. Addressing that concern above it, but it's, it should be uh, reiterated under the conditions. The example approval motion and then those four condi- four conditions? Uh, three conditions are the, are the entire motion, basically.
And that covers a suggested condition also?
Yeah, that kept, so there's, those suggested conditions are written throughout the entire document to meet, meet required standards.
I just want to make sure it was covered in the approval motion. I got some other things I'd like to add to.
Yep.
All right, so is everyone ready if I start reading this motion?
Yeah.
All right.
Wait, you didn't uh, open the public hearing.
I did.
Well, we didn't have any of the, you didn't ask for any of the public to come up and speak.
Well, it was open for a public hearing, so.
Well.
Does anyone else have any comments at this point? Thanks for pointing out, Scott.
Yeah.
And I think my parents would be very pleased to see this project still have some animals in the back. And so I'm here to support that.
Do you mind stating your name and uh? Okay. Selvin Township or Township? Sylvan Township or Township? Okay.
Okay, I guess I'm going to close public hearing then, the OSPD, and then open up for internal conversation. I think we've already had it for the most part, so I'll go ahead and start reading the motion. Planning commission motion to approve with conditions below the final development plan for the open space preservation development. DPOSP, OSPD twenty-five dash zero zero one to allow the, this is eight clusters, isn't it? Is it nine?
It's nine.
Is it nine? All right. Nine cluster development at five, six, zero, one Conway Road as proposed in the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five revised project plans. Because the project meets the purpose, scope, regulations, requirements, standards and criteria under section eight oh five for open space preservation development. As discussed and presented at tonight. And at the December, at tonight, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, in the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four planning commission meetings. And is presented in the planning commission staff report. Conditions of approval, number one. All required federal, state and local reviews and approvals will be required for this project prior to issuance of a zoning and or billing permit, including but not limited to the Washington County Road Commission, Washington County Environmental Health Department, Township Engineering Consultant, Chelsea Area Fire Authority and Chelsea Area Construction Agency. Two, the applicant shall submit the covenants, roadway and shared well maintenance agreements and conservation easement or land trust documents to be reviewed and approved administratively by township staff, which includes legal department. These documents shall address all the requirements for the OSPD, including the items listed below under section thirty dash eight oh five, section D, section six dash ten, section thirty eight oh five E, design standards. One interior street systems B. Number three and number five, I believe. Four, okay. I don't remember Roman numerals too. Section thirty dash eight oh five E, design standards three, utility C. In addition, these documents shall address the use of the access easement to the common space area on lot number four. No building permit shall be issued for an open space preservation development and no construction activity commenced within the open space preservation development until an affidavit containing the full legal description of the open space preservation development specifying the date of final planning commission approval and declaring that all improvements will be carried out in accordance with the approved open space preservation final development plan is recorded with the register of deeds for Washington County. Condition number four. When future development of the site are proposed within the neighborhood would OSPD, they will be required to provide a state survey prior to the issuance of a zoning permit and a certificate of footing prior to the footing expression as required under chapter thirty zoning article two administration and enforcement division. Generally, section thirty to thirty-six certificate of zoning compliance Y I in section thirty to thirty-eight certificate of occupancy H of the township code. Condition number four. Five. All building exteriors, including sheds, storage buildings, etc. will be sheathed with materials that do not materially contrast with the neighboring properties outside. Traditional materials include stucco wood, concrete, tile, vinyl, bricks, stone and metal. As completion of the OSPD site grading plan, the developer shall furnish a grading certification indicating the final as-built grades for all storm inlets, lot corners, high points, low points and ditch lines on lots and all storm inlets, inlets, high points and low points on roadways. The grading certification shall be signed and sealed by the surveyor licensed by the state of Michigan reasonably acceptable to the township.
Is that six conditions total?
That's a lot of reading.
Could you repeat that? I didn't.
Okay, so I think we need a motion for approval.
That you read, you read the motion.
Yep.
That's, that's the motion that Mike Van Buren would like to put forward. Now, I think maybe there's, there should be discussion on that motion. Because some of the things that were added that the PC members might want to discuss.
Well, second, I'll second it.
No, I would like, I'd like to ask questions about the material. Is that consistent with other township? Things like in a different, to me, that feels like something the.
You can stay in tennis to have it look as a regular neighborhood.
To answer your question, no, that is not a requirement of the zoning regulations on a regular vacant property.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would like to avoid doing things that seem very HOA from the planning commission. So I, I support everything else except for, I think it was number five.
Number five. I'd like to leave you this.
Is that something then that would mean like every time somebody wants to re-site a barn, they have to come and talk to us?
Just for this particular.
Sure.
Doug, I think you're right. You should have a second on the motion and then you can discuss the motion.
That is what goes, okay.
And then if the person that put, put the motion through that discussion wants to amend their motion, they do a friendly amendment to that motion.
Okay.
So if we get a second, if we get a second.
Definitely seconded.
All right, we got a second.
And so then mine is discussion of number five doesn't seem consistent with what we normally do here in planning commission. And I'd like to accept one through four and six. And I'm willing to discuss with others, but.
Is the only copy of the proposed amendments sitting in front of you?
Yeah, I, I can, I put those together.
Those are put together by Mike.
Mike, why?
I'm, I'm sorry, my, my memory doesn't go back and recite every single one of those. I can read the motion.
I can briefly explain what five through six. What four, five and six do.
Okay.
Four requires a survey and a certificate of footings for the new builds when they come through. And that would be, he, he references a section of our code that requires a survey and a certificate of footing for properties in the LR district. So it's, so it would be very similar to that. And I believe the reasoning that Mike used that is because the lots are smaller. So he wants to verify that the homes are in the correct location or when they're set. So just like the lots are smaller in the LR district, I do find that we should probably put that into our code somewhere for all PUDs. Because like Chelsea Springs, Chelsea Hillcrest, they should have all been required to have surveys when they were set on the little tiny lots that they're set on to verify that they're put in the right location. So. That's that one. The second one, number five, that he wrote. Courtney sort of summarized that one. It's looking to restrict the use of materials on, on the structures. And Mike can probably explain why he, he wants to restrict the materials. He's restricting them to to traditional building materials. And then the sixth one is grading certific, certification. That just verifies that at the final, when it's, it's required anyway in our, in our normal development agreement that we have, that Rob Thall usually puts together and he probably MC puts together these things too. But it's just a certificate on final that shows that the grading was done to plan. By us, by our engineer or surveyor.
Those public comments close right up.
Mike, could, could you explain number five?
Yeah, the intent here was to ensure that the developments in the neighborhood from the outside appearances reflect the building characteristics of the rest of the township.
Can you reread that, please?
Yeah. All building exterior shall be constructed of traditional materials such as stucco wood, concrete, tile, vinyl, brick, stone, metal.
What would you anticipate would not fit the character?
Um, so for instance, the one building out there now is, has rubber coating on the outside, I believe. That's very untraditional. So whatever development continues in there, I think it needs to match the character of the building conditions of the overall township. It's the exterior shading, right? That's what I was told by the building inspector, so. That's the intent.
Okay.
Where would a?
I, I, yeah, I, I have concerns with, especially with including like specific materials as times evolve. And different, different building material, materials are used, different things will be determined. It's more sustainable than others, such as.
I think the term is this tradition.
Where, where would a system like the EFAS, external insulation foam system?
That's interior, this is exterior.
No, that's exterior. It's like, like a artificial stucco.
Yeah.
That's stucco.
Where, where would that? Well, they don't call it stucco. They don't like to call it stucco. But it looks like stucco. It's, it's a it's not a natural product. It's, it's, it's basically built with styrofoam and a different agent. It's about a thirty-year-old system.
But it does look like stucco when it's done.
It does.
There are, there are that, that system that doesn't look like stucco. It sort of looks like concrete too, because you can have it in different.
You, you can create the finish to be a little different.
I would, I would say that the finish is stucco. But again, I personally, as the zoning administrator, agree with Courtney, because I don't want to have to be the determining factor between what is a material and what is not a material. And if we don't do it for every other building. We do have Westchester Farms and Chelsea, they put requirements in their bylaws and in their HOAs for what color you can make your home and those types of things. But we don't do that as a township. So I think, I think Mike is.
But this is.
Fear is that maybe they'll make a mud structure out there, but it, in reality, if a mud structure is allowed by the building code, is it wrong to build a mud structure? So, and that's up to the six planning commissioners to make a determination on. I think you guys can do a straw poll and see who likes this one and who doesn't like this one. And then maybe talk about either amending or leaving the, the mission the way it is.
To, to generalize a requirement by saying traditional. With all the plastics and manufactured finishes and stuff that are coming out these days and the different looks of new homes and you know, I, I can understand not wanting to see one built made out of old tire treads. People do that though. They stack tires, put cement in them and they make homes that way. Uh, but it's, I, I think I agree with Courtney too, that to generalize a something that's got to be interpreted every time you look at it was because there's something new. And there's a lot of plastics going on. As it is a trim that's being used on a lot of houses and that's PVC. That's not. I understand what you're trying to do, but I, I, it's just, it's a little too sticky, I think, to, a little too general to be able to enforce long-term.
I somewhat agree with you, but on the other hand, it is what it's going to be. I just assume there's no such Jason Scott or whoever the zoning inspector to make a call on it. I really, I do agree with a lot of it, Mike, but in the same breath, it just added work and the subdivision or the community is going to be what it's going to be.
Yeah, I'm just worried it's going to turn into an eyesore.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Courtney.
So I will rescind it based on the.
So you're going to make a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'll make a friendly amendment to remove item number five.
I'm okay with his rescinding.
Let's take a vote for all those in favor of approving this motion. Doug?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes. Yes.
There he is.
Aye.
Liam?
Yes.
Here votes yes, so motion approves. All right. Well, Patrick, we don't want the eyesores out there. Well, I mean, seriously, that's, that's concern for me, right? And this is the first one and just going out there and, you know. You need to do it right.
Continued township support.
That's what I was told by, I haven't, I've never gone out there and looked, but I talked to the building inspector yesterday. I don't want to be, I'm not. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number nine. Comments, concerns of the planning commission members?
I've noticed that our township is lacking a zoning map. We've got future land use and current use, but we don't have a zoning map. And I'd like to maybe address that at our next meeting.
I think we have one.
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's on the website.
It was updated part of the master plan too.
Wasn't?
With colors.
It was in the master plan, but it wasn't updated as part of the master plan. It was approved. Carol approved it when she got rid of the.
Business part?
Yeah, business part.
Right. But we made some changes for the master plan update too, right?
Well, it was future.
The future land.
Or, I'm sorry, yeah, future land.
Well, is it called a zoning map or is it called the current use map or something?
Uh, it's called the zoning.
I did not see it in the.
Our website. Yeah, it's right under the first heading, which is finding and zoning questions, right under the zoning ordinance. It's called zoning.
Okay. All right.
Very important. I use it daily. If you didn't have one, I would have known. We wouldn't be able to tell Patrick that he's currently in the egg, egg zoning district if we didn't have a zoning. I've already been told that.
All right, that's good to know. Thanks.
Hey, anyone else? Anyone in? Scott, you have something to add?
Yes, now that we're coming to a close on our recycle, renewable energy ordinance, I will be starting to work on the next ordinance that was talked about at the joint meetings. Some of the import, there's a bunch of little items that we have to do, some of the things that were talked about through the future land use or the master plan amendments that we just did, like the eighty acres in the RC district and those types of things. But one of the big ones are, is that we don't have any Standards in our site plan review, so that will be. Item get into our ordinance so that we actually go through site plan. We actually have some standards to review instead of just going by state, what best practices.
So is that what you had? That I was commenting on earlier, the site plan review standards that was, those things were all checked off?
No, the, what you had there was, that's the checklist.
Right.
So that's just a list of items that's required to be submitted as part of a site.
Okay, so that's not the standards, okay.
Nope, the standards would be things like. Adable with the surrounding neighborhood. Beats all the engineering requirements. They're very broad standards and they're pretty. All the communities use pretty much the same five, so. Uh, I'll give you an example of a whole bunch of different. In the area that will get five that we like run up through fall. The attorneys like them to be less discretionary, because as you know, site plan review is not, is not, there's not discretion in site. Once you're going to site plan review, that's a project that meets all the requirements. This, what we're doing here tonight is an open space. Uh, open space, it's basically a PUD, but we call it open space. Development plan or preserve, open space preservation development or something like that. But it's a discretionary project. Site plan is not a discretionary project. It's a, it's a project that meets all the requirements and then. You just bring it through a planning. We do require a hearing for ours in the township. Best practices would be to not require a public hearing because the public gets. Comes to these meetings and let's say they come and they really don't like the project, but the project meets all your regulations. The planning commission just heard from fifty community members that they hate this project. And then the PC goes, we approve, because you can't deny a project that meets all the. Non-discretionary requirements if it's a non-discretionary approval process. So it's just a. Makes some people angry, but at some, at the same point, it's a way to notify the neighbors that something's gonna be coming. You know, it still has to have a public meeting at the PC, but. It doesn't need a public hearing, which is the notification. But we can, we can talk about that when we bring it forward. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that I will start working on the next. Um, the next chunk of amendments that we talked about at the joint meeting. Be bringing that to you probably at the end of the summer. When we're gonna start reviewing all of the MTA intro to planning.
Scott, you want to provide an update on the other stuff going on with Chelsea Square?
Well, yes, I guess we can talk about that. Chelsea Square is working on pulling their. So Chelsea Square is the eighty-one unit apartment complex that is off of Edelmeier. It backs up to the Chelsea Hillcrest, Chelsea Springs development, but it doesn't actually go through to that, so it's accessed off of Edelmeier. Um, the developer is working on trying to pull their permits and MC have been working diligently with them. Um, through this, they provided us with their last set of drawings. There were some concerns that I had. Um, with the changes and they, I determined that I couldn't approve them administratively. Um, the way our administrative review goes, I bring it to the planning commission chair to review. And the planning commission chair also could not make the determination that we could do those administratively. So there was a eight and a half foot tall wall. In one portion that was increased, although the developer says it was never increased, but I'm pretty sure. It was because it said three and a half feet on the original plans. On the final plan, it said eight feet. Um, and then there was also nine trees along that shared property line with Chelsea Springs that were being removed. Um, I wasn't here during the hearings, but I believe you guys talked about those. I, I went back and. Tried to listen to all your meetings from those and it sounded like the, the people that were in Chelsea Springs came to those meetings.
Yeah.
And were concerned about those trees.
Yeah.
So that was one of the reasons that we. Didn't want to make that change administratively is because the nine trees were going to be removed. Uh, the developer is saying those have to be removed to hook up the water system. Um, in that because the, the, those trees were planted on the, our water easement. So. He's gonna have to either work something out or come back through for a. A revision to his site plan approval and we'll have to renotice and that they'll be able to come out and see the changes. Comments at that, that time, so.
Yeah, that, you remember the Chelsea Springs folks, right? It was a big deal, so he just, it's not.
So that's, that's where we're at with that one. He wants to always, they want to pull their permits, but. He's been wanting to pull his permits for the last six or eight months with Danny hasn't pulled his permits. So I don't know the truth about how quickly he wants to pull his permits. Hopefully one day they'll pull their permits.
How much time do they have left on their approval?
I'm not sure. They got a, they've got a. Do you know?
I was just gonna say the stamp of the approved plans, uh, like the planning commission stamp was September twenty-third, twenty-one.
Yeah, they've, they've been coming in and getting their.
When's the next extension, Doug?
Extension, I don't know. I would have to look at that.
That was twelve months, right?
Yeah, I, I, I briefly remember when he ca- when he came in, but I don't know. Fires, so we should look at that, because then he can bring that through with his changes. At the same time as new extension. Because I'm guessing you guys don't want to not allow the project, so you just want to allow the project the way it is.
All right, thanks, Scott. Any other comments or questions?
Anything going on with Robin Hills?
That's a good question.
Are they doing anything there?
I know they, they, no. They're still in business, but they originally asked about a permit for a July fourth fireworks, but they just canceled that. But they. Still say they want to do a September. Uh, show, but they haven't submitted any permits for that yet either.
Hmm, has there been any conversations with Phil regarding?
I mean, again, this brings up. I mean, we could shut them down at any time if you wanted to shut them down. They don't have a far, an active farm working on the property, so. I don't think that would be beneficial to the community, but. At any point, we can.
I'm just worried it's gonna come, right?
But I, I, again, I just don't see the end result being the benefit, so. They have sheep out there? That's a farm? I don't know.
All right, anything else, Liam? I, I didn't need as a project, God, it's going nowhere fast, right?
Right.
All right, need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion by Tom seconded by me. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. He is adjourned.
Bar's still open.
The bar's still open?